Evening, I'm sorry. Good evening. Back to you.
I can't complain.
Thank you for doing this.
No problem. Sounds like it's something we need to do, so. All right, I got six o'clock. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the Davie County Commissioners Meeting of August 2nd, 2021, to order. At this time, we will take the roll. You see, there's four of us here. Mr. Blakely will not be joining us this evening, so it'll just be the four of us. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in the invocation. Father, we just thank you for this opportunity to come here tonight in this great, free land, Father, that you've placed us in. Father, help us to use the liberty and freedom that you've given us to govern wisely. Father, we seek your wisdom, your discernment, your knowledge, and your understanding to carry out the business of this great county. Lord, we thank you for each man and woman that serves us on a daily basis, and our military. Father, we thank you for the men and women who are called to service in our fire departments, our law enforcement, our EMS, and our schools, that we might have a safe, wonderful county to raise a family in. So, Lord, tonight, touch us in a mighty and powerful way. Help us to know, Father, that even, Lord, in this time when we, many folks are fearful of the things that are happening around us, that, Father, your arms are around us. You're keeping us safe, Father, and that you have a sovereign plan for each of us and for this great nation. We pray for those that are hurting today because of COVID, because of job loss. Father, and we just pray, Lord, that you bless them, you protect them, Father, and, Lord, you bring them back to health and to safety. And, Father, we just thank you for your mercy, your grace, and your goodness. We pray this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, next we move to the Ethics and Conflicts Disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. President of North Carolina General Statute 168-86, and the Davie County Board of Commissioners Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019. I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda in which we'll come to a vote tonight. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before the agenda is adopted. As chair, seeing no one speak up, I would conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. All right, next we move to adopt the agenda, but before we do that, I understand there's a change to a few words on one of the items on the consent agenda, F1, the resolution on disengaging from Cardinal. And, Mr. Bone, you want to speak to that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. First of all, under the disengagement plan, we had a suggestion that came in over the weekend, and we felt like it's a good adjustment. If you look under Disengagement Plan, Section 5A, Transition Planning, just to clarify, the members of that transition committee, Realignement Committee, first of all, local mental health provider director suggesting changes in the language to local mental health, behavioral health, ADD provider director. And then, further down, where it says "one or more mental health providers", just to clarify, one or more behavioral health, ADD provider representatives. So, just those minor modifications.
Okay, would someone like to incorporate that change into the consent agenda?
I make the motion to adopt the consent agenda, including those changes.
Got that changed. Have a second.
Second.
All in favor of that? All right, now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor. That is approved. Thanks. All right, next we move to public comment period. Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Chair, no one signed up for public comment tonight.
Okay, all right. Next, we have several presentations. The first one is from our new Register of Deeds. Columnist Funderburke to come forward and share with us all the exciting changes she has made.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening, Mr. Bone, members of the board, and Mr. Vogler, and Stacy, and to all my colleagues out there. I think I know most everybody in the room. There might be a few people that I don't know. And to you guys, my name is Kelly Funderburke, and I am the new Register of Deeds. I came on board the first part of December and took over for Brent Shove, who had been here for 20 years. So, it's important to me, and I wanted to just take this time to let you know that sporadically throughout the year, I might pop in and just give you my own personal report. I do go and see Mr. Bone every month and stay in direct contact with him, but it's important to me to respond to you guys personally and to the general public. So, I feel like as a department chair and as an elected official, I want our department to be very visible and transparent, and I want everybody in the county to know what we do. There's a lot of people that don't know what our office has to offer. And part of my job, however long I may have it, is to bring awareness to what we do and to let you know how we're doing and just to make sure that the public knows of all the things that we have to offer. So, I have prepared a little presentation, and I'll go through it rather quickly because I think most everybody in the room knows kind of the initial part of this presentation, but I am going around the county. I've spoken at the Senior Center. I'm speaking in Bermuda Run next month, and just trying to let everybody know wherever they may be, you know, how we're doing, and that the doors are always open. So. All right. If you'll humor me for just a minute, most of you know what our office does, but for those of you out there, what the Register of Deeds does, we have several in-house services. Of course, you can search your land records, which are deeds of trust, deeds, satisfactions. But we also have many other services. You can come in and scan, copy, review plat maps if you live in a development, if you need to look at an easement or know your setbacks. You can come in and review your homeowners association restrictive covenants. A lot of times, you may buy a house, and then you know that you've got restrictive covenants, but you may not have gotten a copy of those. So, for anybody who needs those, you can come get them. You can search for birth certificates, marriage licenses, and death certificates for anyone here in the county. We also file DD 214 forms for all of our military personnel, and that's free of charge. We record power of attorney forms. You can obtain North Carolina marriage license from our office. Notary publics come to our office to get their notary installation, and we keep up with all of those. And you can file assumed business name forms for Davie County. Recently, we have become members of the chamber, so our office is working closely with them. So, when we do have assumed business names come in, we're then referring them to the chamber and trying to help them get a good start here in the county to know where to go. Another thing that we do that many of you may not know is that if you have blueprints or, you know, house plans, we have gigantic scanners and copiers, so if you do need to have large-size blueprints copied, we can help you do that. Since coming on to December, I'm very happy that we have provided a lot of new online services to the community and to the citizens. This is just a snapshot of some of the things that we've done just since December. The first is that we added a property fraud alert notification system. That was part of my platform when I ran, was that I thought it was important that the citizens have some way of knowing what is being recorded in their name, and so we did add that. And so, you can go to our website and put in your email, and anytime anything gets recorded in your name, you will be notified. And also, it's a great way, if you have an elderly parent or an elderly family member, if you think that there might be something astray, or that mama might be giving away the farm, and you want to be aware of what's going on, you can put in that person's name, and you'll get an email to know if something's going on, and then you can investigate it further. We added an online marriage license application, so that that way, especially after COVID, and my generation, we go straight to the computer to look for things, and so we added the online marriage license application where individuals can go to the computer, fill out their marriage license application, and then when they come in, it takes much less time for them to actually be there face-to-face. We added vital record information to the online database searches. What that means is that now, when you go into our website and you go into search, you're only going to get the land information, but you'll also see, if you put in a person's name, if they were born in Davie County or if they died in Davie County. We did not put any sort of parents' names for privacy reasons. We would never want to put mother's maiden name, anything like that, but you will be able to see if there's a child that was born here or a person died. It would give you the date, and then you can call our office to find out more information or to get your certified copies. For the orange, we added online vital record requests, so that if you're sitting from home, whether you're in Davie County or in Las Vegas, Nevada, and you need to get a copy of your birth certificate or a marriage license or a death certificate, you can now go to our website, and it'll automatically link you to Get Certificate Now, which is a program that will allow you to order your vital records, and then we will get the notification and will mail them to you. You have to upload your driver's license, so we can check your identification, but it's a very good way for people to be able to order these things without having to come into the office or make a special trip to Davie County. So, that's another thing that we did. We began credit and debit card processing. Up until this year, we didn't have that, and people would have to go to the ATM to come back with cash. Again, my age group, no, no, we carried debit cards all the time, and so we changed that and did begin adding debit and credit card processing. Starting on the bottom row, we updated the county website, so now it's got hot links and buttons. It's much easier to find. You'll go in, you'll see the wedding rings. You can click on the link at the wedding rings, and it'll direct you to the marriage license. You can click on the trees in the house. That takes you to the land records. It's very simple with big icons that Wendy Horn helped me to create and put on the webpage. I also created an informational Facebook, a social media page. I struggled with that one because I wasn't sure I was going to do it or not, and I'm very cautious about what goes on there, but it is strictly informational. No one can even post comments. It's strictly like if there's changes in time, or if we do do fun things, and I'll put pictures of the staff up there, put pictures of us, like when the chamber came, and mainly, it's just a way for people to know, you know, what our hours are, how to get in contact with us. If we close early, or if it snows, things like that, it's just strictly another way for the younger generation to go straight and see those things quickly. I added a dedicated fax line. That was something that we did not have. We always had, previously, had to send our faxes or receive faxes through the tax office, and I did not want our office not to be independent. I wanted us to have our own independent fax line, so that was a minimal charge that we added. I also moved the Register of Deeds onto a private computer network. Prior to Brent leaving, that was something that he and I talked about with John Gallimore at length, and it was a great idea, and it was a very easy thing to do, and why I did that was because the Register of Deeds, if there was some sort of disaster, the register, let's say that there was, you know, an emergency, and the whole network went down for Davie County. I understand that the priority is EMS and emergency services, and that's exactly where the top would be. To me, I need to get our documents protected and back up and running as quickly as possible. And so, that way, what I did was move us to our own private network so that it silos us off and protects our records. So, now, if there's any sort of disaster in the county, the Register of Deeds is its own little baby over here to the right, and so we're protected in a separate network. So, I did that, and that was, we have a really great speed, and the amount we pay is $60 a month to do that. So, I felt like, considering that we have records, you know, back to 1837, it's important that I protect those records as my job and do the best I can do to keep those records ready to go in the event of any sort of disaster. And then last, I just recently had a computer installed that links directly to the North Carolina AOC system. For anybody that does title work, that's extremely important and should have been done a long time ago, but up until this year, we'd have to go to the courthouse as well when searching a title. Now, we have the computer system right in our office that links to Raleigh for the civil judgments and liens, and that way, we can check things right in the office. Revenue, for any of those that don't know, where do we get our revenue? Our revenue comes from the recording cost, when people come in to record things, the deed stamps, which is calculated based upon the purchase price of a piece of property, our marriage licenses, certified and uncertified copies, notary publicos, and assumed business names. So, all those things, we bring money in, and one thing that I value and that I think is super important for those of you that don't know is that our office is self-sustaining. So, we bring money in. That pays our salaries. That pays things. And so, our expenses, our expenses are our vendor services, you know. We have a company that helps us to get all the images scanned, and we then index them and make them searchable, so we have to pay for our vendor. We pay the salaries, insurance and benefits, the state funds, the document preservation, postage, office equipment, telephone and internet, education and training, professional dues, and then every four years during an election year, there's insurance bonds. So, we bring money in, money comes back out, but we are very self-sustaining, so we pride ourselves in that. This is just a snapshot of the last five years. This is, I think, very important. If you look just between last year, real estate, who would have thought that real estate would have made such a boom during a pandemic? But just that the revenue between 2020 and 2021 was $95,000 increase in the revenue. So, you can see from 2017 to 2021, just from 400,000 to 1,000 to 580,000, that's a huge amount. So, you know, as we go into the future, I still, you know, revenues will continue to go up. So, I just wanted to point out that these were our revenues and expenses, and that we are good to go. We're in the positives for the last five years. Here's our five-year look back at instrument recordings. Like I said, with real estate and the pandemic, it really jumped up this year. So, these numbers, I thought, were interesting to see, that, you know, we had a slight dip there in 2018, but then just from 2020 to 2021, we went from 7,000 to over 9,000 documents. So, 9,283 documents in one year is very, very good. I have to brag on my staff for doing that. Hannah's here, so. This is our instrument type for the last fiscal year. I just thought this was informative, and stuff like this, statistical information, I love. It just shows that the majority of what we do is record deeds, deeds of trust and satisfactions, and then all of the others show you a little bit about, you know, based upon what our percentage of recording is, where that falls in the pie chart. E-filing has really grown, especially in the last several years. When the pandemic came, you know, I know that Brent and the staff, where they were working out of the windows that were raised, raising up and down, and the attorneys would come to the window or come to the back door. But we did have a drastic increase in e-filing over the last several years. E-filing for this last 2021 has really stayed pretty much around 60%, 60% or 61%. But that's great for Davie County. So, I don't think that e-recording will ever be 100% because we still have attorneys like Tammy Fleming that still want, you know, they walk up and see us, and so we still have a lot of walk-ins, but e-filing has drastically grown, and it is a much more convenient way for attorneys to record things without having to drive to Davie County to come in person. They can do it all through the computer. When I started thinking about e-filing, I did go back to Look because I thought, I wonder what it was, pre-COVID, during COVID, and now. So, I took the month of March for the last several years in a row, and in March of 2019, our e-recording was at 46%. And then, March of 2020, it jumped to 60%, and you can see it's come down just a smidge, and I have a feeling it'll stay, you know, right along that 60% or maybe go up a little bit more when people become more aware of it and how easy it is, but I don't think we'll have a drop in e-filing anytime soon. Planning ahead, I have a lot of good ideas, you know, that are popping in my head that I want to do, and so it's just trying to figure out the right timing, but I do want to begin e-recording plats. That's something that our county does not do yet, that we have the capability to do. I will be partnering with veteran services to begin some sort of thank-vet program with vets. It's more like a military identification card, but it's not, doesn't have anything to do with deers or your military ID, but it's for local places to give you a discount. It's like a rewards card, so it would be for veterans. And I think I'll end up, you know, doing police, law enforcement, and that way, everybody can be, include anybody that gives back and is a service to our community, but I will partner with local restaurants and things like that, go out and get a whole bunch of people, and then when they come in, when they record their DD 214 forms, they can get their picture made and get a rewards card to go and just save, you know, just like you do at Lowe's or different places like that. I've also talked with Suzanne and with our certified medical examiners in the funeral homes. I've sent letters to all of them. We're working on the North Carolina Dave program. It's coming. By the end of this year, all death certificates will be electronic. 12/31/21 will be the last day for paper death certificates. So, trying to get all of our funeral directors and all of our medical examiners and all of the people there that sign off with death certificates, all to move towards an electronic system, is going to take a little time. So, I'm a planner, and if I can get people to go ahead and have their training and to go ahead and be prepared for this, knowing that it's coming, then that will help to lessen the panic when it comes, and we all know that it's coming, so been working on that. Been working with Brian and the tax office. We have the capability to move a nightly data transfer to the tax office so that every morning, they'll get a report showing what property is transferred. That'll help the tax office a lot to know and have that report, where then Brian can divvy it out to his employees. And then, last but not least, there is a project that I'd like to begin at some point, not sure when, but UNCG started a program, I'm not sure what year it was, but their goal is to get all 100 counties to pull out all of your slave deeds and put them into a certain index so that North Carolina can have all of its slave deeds pulled out. So, it's called People, Not Property, and there's, many, many counties have already gotten involved, but it's a matter of getting in volunteers to learn how to read the old handwritten cursive deeds where people were sold as property, and so that's something that I think is important, that the citizens would like. And I know we had the Kool-Aid plantation. I know we've got to have deeds down there, whether they're chattel deeds or regular deeds, but the goal is to, you know, get involved in that project with UNCG, get some volunteers in, and then be able to pull those out so that Davie County can say, we've done that, and we've, you know, we've been a part of that project. So, that's one thing that I'd like to do, too. That's it. That's my whole presentation. Any questions? If not, I appreciate your time, and I might pop back in, maybe, you know, in the middle of our fiscal year and at the end of our fiscal year, but I just want you all to know that I'm working really hard to be a good steward of the citizens' money and try to bring it. Everything that I've added has been free, except for our phone line, except for our fax line and our internet, where we switched over to our own network, but all of the other services that I've added for Davie County have been at no cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly, thank you so much for all that you and your staff do. As someone who gets to interact with you all, I really appreciate the professionalism and courtesy and helpfulness that all of the staff.
They're wonderful. Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it.
All right. Next, we have another presentation, or a second presentation, on the Water and Sewer Master Plan. Ask Mr. Lambert to come forward.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Manager. I'm here tonight to talk to you and show you the Davie County Utilities Master Plan and modeling that we currently went through over the last couple of years. This also is built in for the CIP recommendations for that. I'd like to go ahead and say that during production of all of this, what we've done was paid for through the Asset and Infrastructure Grant that we received through the state of North Carolina. We have some money on the back end that we'll be paying out, but also, this will not change the rate structures that we've given you with a five-year outlook on it. So, this is all built into that, and we've done a lot of work here, and it's a different look from what you've seen in the past. So, if I get into acronyms or something too detailed, please stop me and ask questions. So, first, we're going to start out, and we'll just start with an overview about the georeferencing of the billing data, the hydraulic grade line, what it is, how it works in the model, water age analysis, and then the CIP recommendations for the next 10 years. So, this provides a, this slide provides a high-quality or a high-level overview of the data incorporated into it. So, I kind of want to show you all the information that we've put into this asset management plan, and it's based in a GIS-type program to where we can modify it. We can add different layers to it. And this model actually shows us what the system needs, instead of us trying to go out and really change things and see after the fact what had happened. So, this is the current water age of the whole Davie County system. The blue is great. That's minus three days. You know, the light blue is three, three to four days. The green is four to five days, and then the yellow is five to seven days, and then one week. So, the model shows us this, and you'll see that a lot of this red in this slide is from dead-in lines. Very few sections here, other than the northwestern side of the county, has great water age, and we're very proud of that. So, this is another thing that we've layered into this system to kind of show us and help us with the model and tell us what needs to be done, what needs to be replaced, where it needs to be replaced. So, what we do is we keep track of every leak that we have. We put it again into this system, and it shows us on these maps where we've had the trouble issues. As you can see, nothing that should be new, but, you know, the Kool-Aid area, it's an old system. You have a lot of issues there. Bermuda Run, actually, Bermuda Run's an older system, so we have some lines in here that are small, and this really helps us to proceed in what we need to replace in the system. So, what we did is we geo-coded all the meters using probably, you know, one of John's favorite programs, which is ArcGIS. And what this done was it gave us exact street addresses. We put all this information in there, and it kind of gives us a usage of where the water in the county is being used the most. So, you can see it goes from .1 gallons per minute all the way up to 2.0 gallons per minute. And a lot of this, the 2.0 gallons per minute, as Davie is more of a residential-type system than an industrial system, is irrigation. So, it's really, really concerning to see that, but that's what, that's what it shows us. This was another slide. This is something that we really need to work on, and there's a couple of things that we're going to do. So, we got 30% of non-revenue water. Non-revenue water consists of leaks, could be, you know, flushing of fire hydrants, testing of fire systems. This number, we don't really know the true scenario of it because of the cooling water treatment plant. So, Kool-Aid's an older system and an older plant. So, there is a formula that we use that kind of gives us the exact total sense of the system because it's not metered. We think this number's going to come down a lot once Kool-Aid, the new plant is built and that total number is metered. So, what happens is when you're producing water, you're producing a lot of water, but you're using a lot of it to backwash your filters, you know, your your filters, you know, your plant maintenance to continue to run that plant. The calculation's close, but it's nothing like having a meter.
What, just from your experience, or what would, what would be, what should that percentage be in a, in the?
State average is 15 to 20%. In the best-case scenario, if we can get 15 to 20%, we'll take that. I mean, you're going to have a lot of water loss in a, or in a square-mile system, and it's just, we want to see that come down.
So that's what you're working towards?
Yes. And we think this number will come down as soon as the plant's built and we get that true number. So we know what we're producing today, but we don't know exactly how much we're backwashing, how much is actually going to the system. This, I'm not going to go in too much detail of. I just want to explain what a hydraulic grade line is and how it affects the model. So this is an actual working model, and we layered this in, you know, so we can go in here and we can add a line in this model. We can change the line size in this model. And what a hydraulic grade line does is it tells us the pressure throughout the system. So if we change a line, it'll tell us the days that, you know, the age of the water changed. It'll tell us the pressure changes. This was two foot. We, at first, when it come out, there were some problems that we were concerned about, and that's the right-hand side of this slide. So we went out, we'd done some evaluation, and we found out some of the pressure-reducing valves that we have in the system weren't calibrated correctly. So once we calibrate them correctly, we come within two foot, and that's great. Like I said, if we add a line, it'll tell us what it changes the pressure on each side. So even a mile away. So it'll tell us what the change is in water age. So we're going to get into some water age because that's something that, you know, we want to have the highest quality of water we can to the customers. So here's a water, the water age analysis, you know, it's surrogate for water quality. The less days, the better the water quality is. So Davie County's distribution system uses free chlorine still. We plan changing that in addition to the new plant. We'll go, we won't use gas chlorine anymore. You know, gas chlorine is, we've got some fire departments here that'll tell you it's very dangerous, so we want to get away from it. Use a liquid base, like a police-type scenario. The typical water age recommendation for a free chlorine system is five days. So you can see we have some, some issues here in the northwestern side of the county and some dead-in-lines. Some of the dead-in-lines we've been through in the, in the years past, and we fixed that. You're going to have dead-in-lines. You can't loop everything. In a perfect world, we could, but you just can't. It's nearly impossible. So, so, and again, every system is unique and may find acceptable limits for water quality higher than five days. And Davie's done that, and we'll get into that a little bit more. So this model also includes the new piping on Main Street coming out of the new water treatment plant. So we've, we've already added that to this model to know what's, what's going to happen once we install those pipes. So existing water age, again, you know, below three days in the low zone, that's great. Water age exceeds one week in the high zone, which is Sheffield Stand Pipe. It's got exceedingly high water age in it. So to explain what a stand pipe is, a stand pipe is a column of water that sits on the ground. So basically, you've got a round tube that sits right on the ground, and water sets from the ground level up. Something that we don't like to use, it's something that was in the system, put in the system years ago, and we've made it work. But now, if you look around the county, you see elevated water storage tanks. You don't have to hold as much water in those elevated storage tanks. You can move it because your pressure don't drop because you're already 20, 30 feet off the ground. So we want to get that stand pipe out of there. And we looked at that in this model of the different things that we can do to get that. So the two areas identified for water quality improvements were the western side, you know, northwestern side of the county, and that's the Sheffield area. So the Sheffield Pipe, Stand Pipe, it's got 55 feet of water in it when it's full. We can only reduce that to 55 feet, or from 55 to 50 feet. So we're only getting about five foot of turnover in that, in that stand pipe. We do turn that stand pipe over more. What we do is we take it out of service. We actually drain it and we fill it back up because we want higher, higher quality water in the area. We looked at taking this stand pipe out of service, and the problem with that, it great, it impacts local available, available fire flows and pressures without installing improvements. So what improvements would we have to, to install to be able to take that stand pipe out? The major issue here is you've got a small line that runs Greenhill Road, from Junction Road to Greenhill Road Palm Station. So the suction side of that wouldn't produce enough water. So we would actually have to go all the way back and replace that line. So you're looking at about six-plus miles of 12-inch water line if you take that stand pipe out of service. You know, you're looking at, you know, six to eight million dollars. Well, right now, probably six to 10 million dollars, depending on the economy. Staff has done a great job at watching this tank, sampling this tank, and keeping the water quality great. I mean, they've, they go out, they take samples, they'll drain it down, they'll cut the valve off. So they're flushing lines daily. We see more of a higher water age in the summertime than we do the wintertime, actually. So they've done a great job. This, right now, staff is maintaining the water quality, and we don't recommend going back and doing this right now. We want to look at some other options. So what the model does in the, in the four main things that we look at for line extensions is the water quality concerns. So we know that's in northwestern Davie, Davie County. Frequent breaks. You know, we've got some aging infrastructure. We have to replace it, you know. Whether we'd like to or not, we'd like to put new lines in every year, but if we're not replacing the aging infrastructure, we're just going to get behind. So, and we know we got a lot more infrastructure that's nearing, that's nearing the end of its useful life. Coolme Water Treatment Plant, for one. So, and then extensions for targeted development areas identified in Davie County Comprehensive Master Plan. So all these are rolled into that model, the Comprehensive Master Plan, the water quality, the frequent breaks, and then even the years the infrastructure's been in there. So all this is in there. And the current CIP has a total of $4.8 million for water and sewer extensions. And I want to talk about that. So what did the model tell us? The model told us that you had water concerns in northwestern Davie County. You want to target the frequent breaks, and then you want to identify and target the developmental areas. So this is what the model tells us. Main Church Road, Phase 1 and 2. So this meets all that criteria because you're, you're tying in from 158 to 601, which you can move water from northwestern Davie to 158 because that's your higher-usage areas. So you've got Phase 1 and Phase 2 of that. And again, we're trying to stay in what our CIP plan for the next 10 years does. We know we've got $4 million, and we want to be able to spend it on projects that help the system and follow all the guidelines. So Phase 1 is 10,100 feet of trench pipe, of 8-inch pipe. And again, Phase 1 is from the Main Church Road, Extension Cana Road, down to 40, and that's a total of about $1.185 million. And then Phase 2 of that would be from the I-40 back up to the 158 side. That's 3,900 feet of trench pipe and then 400 foot of trenches in station, which is a bore. You know, you've got a bore 40. So, and, and once, once you get into bore, you get into a lot heavier costs. So that's why you see that these two are, you know, actually, the smaller, the 3,900 feet is, is, you know, more expensive than laying 10,000 feet because of the bore. And then the model also recommended a tie-in on Yakon Valley Road. So you've got a dead-in there, and if we tie this in, it gets rid of the water quality concerns, you know, and then that's, that's where it targeted here. So again, back to replacing infrastructures that's seen it's in the useful ice or the, or the main breaks are, you know, heavy. And that's where Coolme brought out. So we know we're building a new plant down there. We know we're going to see more pressure come out of this plant. We know we're going to see more problems here. You can see some of these red lines, and I printed this out, and I'm sorry it's so hard to see, but, you know, you see these red lines between these two blue lines going underneath people's homes, beside people's homes and yards. We've done a lot of upgrades here by going away with some of these little lines. Staff's done a great job of doing it themselves. But some of these larger lines, we just don't have the capabilities or the equipment to do it. So this is Coolme Phase 1, and that's replacing what you see in the blue lines and taking these lines that are running through people's yards and underneath houses and garages out of service. And that's a total of $644,000. So the CIP recommendations and what the model tells us comes to a total of $3,452,000. We've left some room in there because we know that there's probably some other things that come up during these, you know, 10 years. We know price changes. We know we're having, you know, some other things that will happen. But again, I want to say with all the money that's, you know, in this infrastructure bill that we go after for grants and replacements and things like that, this 10-year, 10-year CIP, maybe two years. I mean, Mr. Bone sees a lot of that stuff come down. The, you know, depending on what funding options that we have over the next two years, we will go after every one of them, and then we'll, we'll go back into this and we'll look at the model. We have the model now. The model was the, you know, the majority of the cost to build this model. Now that we have this model, we can update this pretty easily. So we'll continue to update it. But again, this is with the funding that we have now that's built, that was built in our CIP and still built in our CIP. So what we want to look at is our capital improvement plan. And again, I want to stress that, you know, we provide you a five-year outlook, three-to-five-year outlook on the rates every year. And in this CIP, we've got the renovate and repair replacement of the water lines. Let's see, where's exactly that? New water and sewer extensions. So 2021's $500,000, and then we start seeing some capital debt this year for Eastern Davie. So we dropped it down to $400,000 for, for two years, and then it goes back up to $500,000 in 2024. So 2023, we look at the completion of the new water treatment plant, and we also look at the debt for that coming on. So we want to secure that before we go back up to the $500,000 a year. But we're still doing other capital projects with this. This is, the only thing that you're looking at here is spending that $5,000 to $400,000 a year or multi-year projects. You know, we're still doing a lot of renovations. We're still building the water treatment plant. So we're looking at a total capital improvement project of about $49 million over the next five years, four years. And rate increases are minimal. I mean, you're looking at a 4%, 4.5% rate increase for two years, and then we're dropping that back down below to the 2.25%. Again, this could change with funding options. We just don't want to change the rate increases. We want to stand by short, small rate increases yearly. I think that's the impact that we want to really stress is we don't want to see those 10%. We don't want to see those, you know, 12% rate increases for infrastructure. We want to keep the rate increases low, and we want to maintain our system, and we want to add to our system. Any questions, comments?
Do have a comment, if you don't mind. I would like to say that I understand this is a constantly erratically moving target you're trying to hit, and we appreciate the job that you're doing with it.
I know North Carolina's still in a drought. There's been a couple storms, which would suggest we weren't in a drought, but normally are in a drought. So as far as flows from the Yadkin, have we had any issues with that?
No, you know, Davie County's very lucky when it comes to that. I mean, we got the Yakon River in the south, Yakon area. We've got straws on both sides, and luckily, we're not seeing a huge impact yet. So we, we pay very close attention to that. And Mike Weir and the staff at the Water Treatment Plant, I'll tell you, they're great. I mean, they, they're constantly watching that, and they're working some long hours right now. So again, shout out to Mike and the staff at Water Treatment Plant. It's, you know, they're working 18, 19 hours a day right now. So they're doing a great job with that.
We appreciate the job you and your staff do. Do a great job, so.
When you were talking about the hydrants on the, in the Baltimore Road area, you and I had spoken months ago about the Princeton Court.
Yep.
Was the meter calibration the issue there?
No, I think everything was fine.
Okay.
So we went out and checked it. We've worked with the fire departments in the contract to change some of the things that they wanted. You know, I'll go back to say that this system wasn't built for fire suppression years ago, and that's why we have so many problems now. And they allow 2-inch lines, they allow 3-inch lines, they allow 4-inch lines. You know, 12 years ago, when, when I started this, that was the first thing we changed is there's no, there's very little cost difference between a 6-inch line and 2-inch line. You're digging the same ditch, you're going the same distance. You're looking at a very small percentage in, in cost between a 2-inch pipe and a 6-inch pipe. And that's why we're going back and paralleling all these lines now to get that flow out to these places. So we're working towards that.
Thank you, Johnny.
Any other questions for Mr. Lambert?
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. We move to the third presentation, which is an update on the, or the annual review for the senior services. So I'm going to ask Ms. Chusky to come forward.
Thank you so much. It is my pleasure to bring our annual report for 2020 and 2021 fiscal year. Undoubtedly, the most unique year that we have ever had because we were closed the entire fiscal year. So that is certainly not something that we are used to. But a lot of times, I will bring this report, talk about record numbers. That's not going to be the case this year. Sometimes we have some record-low numbers, but, but there are actually some surprising numbers as well. However, I am extremely proud of our team, our county, our supporters, and what they did to continue services during the pandemic. We altered every single method, every service that we, that we provided. We had to change the way that we did it, and we served our seniors in the best way that we could and tried to keep them active and engaged in what was the most vulnerable population for this pandemic. So extremely proud of what, what happened over the fiscal year. We actually will be incorporating some of those changes, or have, have incorporated some of those changes even as we open back up July 1st. A lot of what we can do, what we did virtually, what we did with some alternative programming, we will continue to offer those who maybe still are not comfortable to come in to the center, the opportunity to still take part. So there are still some virtual offerings. There's still the opportunity to pick up some frozen meals for those who don't want to come in for lunch. So a lot of what happened, all of the, the good things that we were able to do, we will be able to continue doing some of those in the future. So I'm not going to, this is, there we go. I'm not going to go through word for word. You have the report, and I will get this posted on the website in the next week. So certainly not going to go through all of the numbers, but just want to hit some of the highlights. Obviously, our unduplicated numbers of folks that we saw, 2,039 as compared to 2,671 last year. Keep in mind, we were closed for three and a half months of the last fiscal year, but, you know, certainly not all of it like we did this time. However, if you look at the total units of service or visits to the center, 102,317 compared to 105,000. A lot of that has to do with our lunch program, which we'll talk about in just a minute. So down, but not down substantially. Certainly, our staff and our board, whether our advisory council or in our Health and Human Services Board, have a great impact on what we do, and we thank them for all of their support. So just kind of highlighting some of our services that we offer. Our caregiver program was probably one of the least impacted programs that we had, although the method of intake, we had to alter that. We were still able to serve right about the same number of caregivers, actually a couple more caregivers than we were in the past. A couple of highlights of that program, we won two awards with this program this year. The Ayers Innovation Award for 2021, both in the Information and Referral Service Delivery category, and then the overall innovation- overall Innovation of the Year Award, and this is a national award. And that award was for our online delivery program for our incontinent supplies and our nutritional supplements. And also thanks to a CARES grant that we received, we were able to expand services. So we were able to start some activity kits for those who have dementia. We have some robotic therapy pets that we can make available to folks, and we have GPS tracking systems for those who wander. So this program actually was able to thrive during the pandemic. As far as information referral and options counseling, you can see the numbers. We did a much better job this year of identifying the callers, whereas last year, we had 3,236 anonymous callers. Only 621 of those were anonymous this year, and the numbers were about 1,300 less than they were last year. Accomplishments in this area, we were able to get our second social worker certified as an options counselor, and we were able to update our community resource guide and reprint and publish that. And those are available for anyone who might need those. Our in-home aid program did suffer substantially throughout the pandemic. This was due to staffing issues from our provider. They were not able to keep and maintain staff in order to go and serve the clients. So you can see, particularly in the HCCBG-funded program, those numbers were down considerably. The provider informed us in late May that they would not be renewing the contract. And as you all know, that was awarded to another bidder, and we are working feverishly to get that program up and going again. We're very hopeful that the new company, they seem very client-focused, very staff-focused, and they even secured office space here in Davie County. So I think they're very committed to the program. As far as just the miscellaneous programs, we give away some personal items, fidget aprons, twiddle muss, walker aprons, that sorts of things. Those are about steady. Our legal services were down substantially. Our grant is a very, very small grant, and it gets cut to has for the past three years. So we rely a lot on people who use the program donating back to it, and that was down substantially last year. So we were not able to serve as many people with our legal aid. However, we were able to serve 97 ship clients with help of their Medicare, 272 tax aid clients, which we had to shut down in the middle of last year, and were able to offer those back in-person socially distanced this year. And we're able to serve 15 of our special assistance in-home aid clients. So nutrition program, this is where a lot of those numbers come from. So we're still setting records. It was not quite expected, but we served 53,795 congregate meals last year. You can see in the year before, it was 23,611. So that's already an increase of 128%. But I pulled the numbers for the last normal year we had, which was 1819, and it was 12,766. So we, it just exploded. We went to a frozen meal pickup program. They could pick up five frozen meals every week, and just saw incredible demand for this program. Our highest week, we had, the number of people picking up was 302 people picking up meals. Thank goodness it leveled off a little bit from that. And obviously, that impacted our budget greatly because the grant that we used to fund this program was gone in less than three months. So thank goodness we were able to get additional grants and funds to run that program. So that is a lot of what is responsible for our numbers not going down any more than they did. Meals on Wheels stayed pretty consistent, went down just a little bit compared to last year. Last year, we were able to supplement, they got multiple meals. Once the pandemic hit, we were able to supplement them with multiple meals, and we went back down to the one meal. So that's why it's a little bit down from last year. But actually, our last normal year was 33,717. So it's up just slightly from that. The frozen meals didn't work for a lot of our Meals on Wheels clients, so some of them did drop off. But now that we're back to hot delivery, they, that number is picking back up again. We also got a $10,000 grant to support the Meals on Wheels program, and we used this fund to purchase items. We sent out three different kits at three different times in the year, and they had things like adult coloring books, puzzles, craft kits, games, just things to keep them engaged during this time. Our senior center program is certainly the most impacted. With our doors being closed, we did all that we could do to continue to bring senior center programming to our participants. This was with drive-through events, parking lot events, virtual events. But our numbers speak for themselves, 2,743 visits as compared to 22,607 in the previous year. So obviously, while that was the most impacted, the folks who did come out, we got just so many compliments and so much appreciation for what we tried to continue to do during this time. We, some of the highlights, we had a drive-through resource fair. We had our drive-through Veterans Appreciation. That was our highest event with 142 participants. We had a Christmas Party Drive-Thru that had 136 participants. We had parking lot bingo regularly, and they loved that. We did some things by Zoom. The Zoom seminars were not very successful, but we continued offering, and we will continue to offer those because it's just not that much more trouble. And if anyone could join in that couldn't come to us, then it's worth it for us. And we'll continue on with the virtual yoga and line dancing as well, which was more popular during the pandemic. We also got some CARES funding for that as well, and we were able to update technology in order to be able to, to do this alternate method of programming. Our volunteer program, obviously, we were not able to use as many volunteers either. Many of these volunteers are our sheriff's office, who very graciously came out and helped us deliver meals during the entire year and are still helping us now. So we had 212 volunteers during last fiscal year. We did do an appreciation, a drive-through appreciation for them. Our theme this year was thanks for sticking with us. And what we were able to capitalize on this year is the use of our high school volunteers. Toward the spring, when it became a little bit safer, we, because of their altered school schedule, we were able to use a lot more of our high school volunteers during the day at a time when typically they are not available to us. So we were very happy that we were, could strengthen that partnership. As far as our financial information, we, we did get lots of new, sorry, I think this is in quite the same order as it is, don't mind, but we were able to get quite the, a lot of new grants this year that we don't typically get. Although we were not able to have any fundraisers this year, we still were able to bring in $20,077 in donations and another almost $5,200 for donations for Meals on Wheels. And then you see the whole list of new grants. Those are in addition to the normal grants that we typically get. That, along with funding that we received from another provider because they could not provide transportation during this time, was over $153,000 in new grants for this year. So that is what helped sustain us throughout the increase in demand. As far as our metrics, we thought creatively on how we could meet those metrics. It was very difficult to have health seminars, so we thought creatively on how we could do those things. And so we're very pleased that we were able to meet all of our metrics except for the senior games. We had a metric of having at least 119 participants in senior games. Obviously, we were very fortunate. We were able to offer senior games this year. We could not do that last year, but it had to be a hybrid method with only some in-person and some on-your-own activities. So we knew we weren't going to get the participation. But we were very thrilled to have 67 participants in that, in that. And all of our other metrics, we met or exceeded. And then the rest of the booklet is thanking our donors for the year and those who gave financially to us to help support us. So I would love to answer any questions, if you have any, but that is a very, very brief rundown of what we did last year.
Any questions for Ms. Shusky? I would just say that that's a great job in some very difficult circumstances. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Right. So next on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the extension of the solar energy moratorium. So I'll ask Mr. Meadwell to come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning staff is requesting that the current moratorium on solar generating facilities be extended for an additional six months. If the board recalls, back in March of this year, the board did adopt a resolution in support of, of the current moratorium. As I mentioned, staff is asking for an additional six months to be added to this. This will carry the moratorium until February of 2022. This will continue to allow staff to develop the ordinance as well as the ability to have public input and engagement in this. Staff has done a considerable amount of research into the development ordinance, but we're just not there yet. So this does require public, and the resolution that's included in your package is similar to that same resolution that the board did approve in March of this same year. So I'll be more than glad to answer any question that any board member may have.
Do you think six more months will be enough?
I don't, oh yeah, I think so. And we're, we're pretty close now, but we just need just, just a little bit more time to just make sure we have it right.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Meadwell at this time? All right. So this is a public hearing, so I'll ask Mr. Vogler to tell us the rules of engagement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chair has announced this as a date now of the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes and Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinance. And this board has conducted a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Davie County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 155, zoning ordinance for the proposed ordinance to extend for six months the moratorium to establish and expand solar energy generating facilities. Do you notice that this public hearing is advertised and in a legal newspaper and general circulation in the county as required by law on July 22nd and July 29th, 2021, as noted in the notice of public hearing that's in your agenda packet? I would ask anyone who wishes to come forward to speak either for or against the proposed extension to come to the podium, state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposed ordinance.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak. And what I'd like to mention is just a couple of things that I would like to see in the resolution that's coming before the, the board later.
Sir, for the record, could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the first thing you told me to do. My name's Jerry Shore, and I live on Ratley's Road. Okay. One of the things I'd like to see in the resolution is that when, when an application comes before the board, that it requires that it be certified backup for anything that's presented to the board. If, if the board is told so many acres or, or whatever, everything is certified, where it'll be truthful, the board will get the information that, that's Next thing I would like to have in the resolution is that each commissioner or planning board member, ever who the determining factor is, visit the site personally. You know, I know you can see drawings and everything, but when you visit the site, you see the situation, the existing situation. And I'd like for the board also to, to make sure that consideration is given for the benefits to the county, plus what protects the right of the property owners. And, you know, just like to remind you that North Carolina is one of the leaders in, in the solar industry. And just ask it, this be put in the resolution. And I appreciate the time to speak with you tonight. Thank you very much.
And sir, I assume you mean be put into the actual ordinance?
Yeah, in, in the
Okay. Not the resolution? Okay.
The resolution is to extend it, but in the ordinance, that you'll have all the certified information required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one else come forward, I now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing, and then take whatever action if any of the board wishes to do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vogler. All right. At this time, we will declare the public comments section of the public hearing closed, and turn it over to the board for discussion or action.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Mr. Shore for his comments this evening. I think they're very relevant and need serious consideration. And I'd also make the motion that we extend this moratorium for the needed six months.
A motion and a second. I mean, a motion, looking for a second. Would anyone like, okay, all right. Got a little excited there. Okay. All right. Now we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none or hearing none, all in favor to extend the moratorium for six months, raise your hand. That is approved. Thank you, and Mr. Shore, thank you for your comments. Right. So next we move to the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions about that? Comments?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Finney makes the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, raise your hand. That is approved. All right. Next we move to the county manager's report. Mr. Bone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to say that after months of decline, North Carolina is experiencing a rapid increase in COVID-19 cases among those who are unvaccinated. Davie County has had 42 new cases over this past weekend. The Delta variant is now causing the vast majority of COVID-19 cases in North Carolina and nationally. Delta is more infectious than the previous variants. The vast majority of recent cases are in people who are not fully vaccinated. 94% of cases and deaths from May 16th to July 11th are those that are unvaccinated. All the state's key metrics are increasing. To respond to these rising trends, the state has updated its guidance. Everyone is encouraged to practice the three Ws. Wear a mask in all indoor public settings, wait six feet apart in all public settings, and wash your hands often. Furthermore, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention recommend people who are, live in areas with high or substantial levels of transmission, wear a mask when indoor in public settings, even if they are vaccinated. Also, just want to remind you that walk-in vaccinations are available at Davie County Health and Human Services, and vaccinations are also available by appointment by calling As you're aware, a resolution was adopted unanimously by the board on June 2nd directing staff to begin the process of disengagement from Cardinal Innovations Healthcare, our current LME MCO. And on June 29th, this board voted unanimously to realign with Partners Health Management. Through a resolution on the consent agenda for, at tonight's meeting, you approved a plan of disengagement from Cardinal. We will post this plan on our website tomorrow, and Davie County will seek public comment on the plan for 60 days. Following this public comment period, the county will post all responses for an additional 30 days. Davie County will take into consideration feedback received, revise the disengagement plan as appropriate, and will submit a written request to disengage to the Secretary of North Carolina DHHS for her approval. As we work through this transition, Davie County remains committed to facilitating and providing appropriate services for our residents. We will continue to work with Cardinal Innovations and Vaya in a professional and appropriate manner, which is in the best interest of our organization and the residents of Davie County. Want to remind you as well that Davie County has signed a contract with Fountain Want to remind you as well that Davie County has signed a contract with Fountain Works, a consulting firm, to design and conduct a public engagement process regarding Davie County's strategic priorities. In September, an in-person open house is planned where residents and other stakeholders can provide input on Davie County's priorities. Following the open house, multiple focus groups will be held virtually in October with target audiences and key stakeholders. Involving the community is crucial to continually obtaining, updating, and refining the county's strategic goals and budgeting priorities, and we look forward to this community engagement process. On the parks, on the recreation and park side, we have a summer concert series event coming up on Saturday, August 14th at 6:30 PM with Ace Party Band. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have at this time. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Quick question, the Fountain Group, the first open house in September, has that date been, the specific date been nailed down yet?
No, sir, we will let you know as soon as we get that specific date.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody got any questions for Mr. Bone? Thank you. All right, any old business that come before us this evening? All right, how about any new business?
Mr. Chairman, I have an item of new business I'd like to bring up. Being that we have received a partial amount of our ARP funds, and we've already had a little bit of a discussion of how some of those funds may be used, even though we don't have an established plan, I would like to propose that we would move forward with purchasing the Lucas devices for the emergency medical services to have on each truck that is in service in our county, and I would like to make a proposal tonight that we move forward on that, and then we can conclude our planning for the rest of those funds at a later date. And I think, Robin.
Mr. Vogler, do we, does the board need to adopt a motion to add this as a new item? Or are we, are we good moving forward?
It would be under new business.
Pardon?
It would already be under new business.
So we're
Item under new business.
Just as a bit of background information about the American Rescue Plan, in March of this year, that Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was signed into federal law. It designated $1.9 trillion intended to combat the COVID-19 pandemic. We were allocated $8.3 million. We've already received 4.1 of that in June of this year. We'll receive the remainder of those funds to get to the $8.3 million next June. We'll develop, as Ms. Finney has referred to, a full plan in the coming months to allocate the funds. We want to use them at their highest and best use in conjunction with the county's strategic plan as well as community need. Of the funds allocated to local governments, there's several different areas addressed in the Plan Act regarding the proper use. One of these areas is a public health response, which deals with the mitigation of the effects of the pandemic on the mental and physical health of county citizens. So what we're proposing to do is use $112,000 for Lucas devices for emergency medical services. Right now, we currently own one of these devices. This would get seven more, which we could put on each ambulance that we have in use. Just some background about a Lucas device, for those who aren't familiar, is a mechanical chest compression device that assists in delivering high-quality, guidelines-consistent chest compressions to sudden cardiac arrest patients in the field, on the move, and in the hospital. This is to, if you ever are familiar with CPR calls out in the field, they try to get people changed out every few minutes, and if you've ever been through CPR training, two minutes to do chest compressions is an extraordinary long time, so this aids in that, and that definitely can help with COVID because you're not rotating people, putting their hands on patients. So before you tonight, we have prepared a resolution in anticipation of this about the Lucas devices that's required for the American Rescue Plan Act, and this just, you know, goes into some of the details that I've mentioned, that we are going to receive $8.3 million. We've already received half of this. These funds must be allocated by December 31st of 2024. We'll develop a very detailed plan for the remainder of the funds in the coming months, and that we are just proposing to use 112,000 of this for these seven Lucas devices. Also, before you tonight, we have a budget transfer proposed. The American Rescue Plan funds was a part of the budget ordinance that we adopted for this current fiscal year. This is just simply moving $112,000 out of the general health, public health response into specifically the emergency medical services capital outlay in order to purchase these devices.
Then we'll be reimbursed.
We already have the funds set aside in a separate fund called Coronavirus Relief Funds. We had CARES Act money in there before that we spent. Now we have these funds in there, so those funds are there, but they're already allocated, but they're allocated in a general sense. So we have the $4 million that we have already, already allocated in a general public health response sort of line item. So now, all we need to do is just move it into the specific line items of the areas we want to further identify to use these funds.
Okay, anyone have any questions about what's before us? Mr. Vogler, we need to do this in two motions or one?
You need to do two motions, one for each one, one for the resolution, and one for the budget transfer.
All right. Ms. Finney, I would assume that your comments were headed towards a motion, so would you like to make that motion?
I would, thank you very much. I make a motion that we adopt the resolution to move forward to, to purchase the Lucas devices.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of moving $112,000 from the American Rescue Plan funds for these devices, raise your hand. That is approved. And then the second housekeeping item of the actual budget transfer, would you like to make that motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the budget transfer from the American Rescue Plan to the emergency medical service account for the purchase.
Okay, motion, have a second. Second, Ms. Poindexter, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that transfer is approved, all right. All right, any other questions for Ms. West?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that is an excellent use of these funds. Do we have any other new business that come before us this evening? All right, we will move to commissioners' comments, and Mr. Poindexter.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, taking the time out of your busy schedules to attend this meeting and keep up with the business of the county. I'd also like to thank Johnny and his staff for the hard work that they do trying to get water for people with insufficient water, for people with water quality issues, and fire flow needs for the fire departments and the fire services. Thank all of you.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just say, kind of piggyback on what Richard said, thanks to Kelly, Johnny, and Kim, not, not just for their reports, but what those reports represent, service to the citizens of Davie County, and that's, in that little, in that 45 minutes, we heard a lot of, a lot of good things going on, and I thank you so much for that. Mr. Shore, thank you for your comments, and I know Andrew has stepped out, but I hope that, you know, in this next six months, we're going to assimilate a lot more ideas and thoughts from citizens about how we move forward with that ordinance. And I also, nobody, no one's here from the school board, but I want to thank, on record, our school board partners for their vote in making masks optional for our, the children in our schools. I think that was a great move. I think they listened to the parents and families of this county, and I want to applaud them for that action. And other than that, I just want to thank each of you for being here, thank you for all you do, because not everybody here works for the county, but you all serve the county in some form or fashion by volunteering, by getting out and being involved in the community, our fire partners here, sheriff back there, Brian, all his staff, and just thank you for all you do.
Ms. Finney?
I will do a lot of echoing, because I also want to thank Kelly. Thank you for all of the wonderful new ideas that you're bringing to the office and, and your staff, just nothing, you haven't missed a beat at all, everything's just gone so smoothly. And Kim and all of the staff at Senior Services, it's amazing the things that they have done the last year during this pandemic, and how they've tried to keep everybody engaged, and I really appreciate that. And Johnny, thank you for all that you do and all that, I don't know how you keep up with it. Every time you do a presentation, I'm like, how in the world does he even know what else is going on, so thank you so much. And I want to thank the staff for getting the resolution together, for the Lucas devices, and the board for us quickly approving that, and I really appreciate that. Mr. Shore, thank you for being with us tonight. We always need to hear the opinions of our citizens and, and helping us make decisions, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Everyone's having a good summer. This will be, I guess, our last meeting, the next meeting will be Labor Day, so summer's fast coming to an end. I would echo everything's been said, but underscore Mr. Jones' comment about the school board, that was a, the correct decision in my opinion, so I, here, here. Again, thanks for being here. We look forward to this engagement with the firm that's going to tell us what our priorities and, or help us decide what our priorities are in the county, and I hope you will be part of that, and we will look forward to, or hopefully you will come back and join us next month. And with that, the next item is a closed session, and, and I have to read this, so bear with me. So at this time, we will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion, have a second.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, we are in closed session, we will be back out once we're All right, so we're back in open session, and so we have discussed the, joining the federal lawsuit to be part of the opioid settlement. We have a resolution of understanding to enjoin, to get enjoined in that. Would someone like to make the motion to move forward?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the resolution that's presented, raise your hand. That is approved 4-0, thank you. Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, we are adjourned, thank you.